With liberty and justice for all. All right, is Representative Berthew called in yet?
He is 8282.
8282.
Okay, yes.
All right, we'll postpone any public comment. I want to start right off. We have State Representative Berthew is with us via phone. They were in session today in the House. They just got out so he can call us on his ride. Good evening, Representative Berthew.
Oh, he's muted. Rep. Berthew, you're muted?
Can you hear us? Donnie, you there?
Do you have the ability to unmute him, Jessica?
Does he?
Not that I know. Oh, actually, as I do.
I think he was calling in on the phone, so it should just be a phone call.
Yes.
Unless he's zoomed in on his phone. I didn't check what she was doing.
No, no, he's here on his cellphone, and I'm trying to unmute him. It's not working.
Sorry about the delay, folks. We're trying to get the representative in the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything more that I can do on my end to try and unmute him.
Did we give him the right phone number for a phone call? Or do you think he's called in on the Zoom number?
Yeah, no, he's up there in that corner right there.
So that's on the call inside?
Okay, Joshua Smith is suggesting that Rep. Berthew presses star six on his phone.
Okay, if you can hear us, try pressing star six on your phone.
He may need to wait until he gets to a point where he could pull over if he's doing some type of hands-free system in his car while he's driving.
Yeah, he did send me a picture that he has on speaker on his phone.
So he's able to hear us?
I didn't answer. I believe it's a different phone than I'm texting, but if he's driving, he's not going to be able to answer.
Right, right.
Well, why don't we take a minute then? We'll go back to, yeah, it says, yes, he has to unmute me. So he says he can hear us, but you have to unmute.
I'm asking him to unmute his mic because he's able to do it by pressing the star six.
That's right. What they're saying is you have to press star six now to unmute it on your end, Donnie?
Because I've given him permission to talk, but it's on his side that he has to. It's like a double door system.
Yeah, I didn't have that problem when I called in before. I don't know. Hoping we can hear you, but nothing yet. He says he's unmuted.
Maybe if he could potentially try and call us back.
Yeah, could you try to hang up and dial it again? Representative, please? You said yep. And how many people do we have?
We have five residents calling in on mute.
And any other phone calls or?
Nope.
I'm surprised we didn't have more.
Okay, so he's called back in, so I'll allow him to talk again.
He was unmuted until you just did whatever you did.
I just gave him the ability to talk to the board because prior to me giving him that permission, he wouldn't have been able to unmute himself and talk to us at all.
Does he need to be a panelist? Could that fix this?
You can't promote a phone number to a panelist. You can only give them permission to talk.
Star six doesn't work on many of the smartphones. It's actually a separate mute/unmute button, not necessarily a star six on a conventional phone.
He's showing me a picture of his screen.
Back out of your keyboard, you may find that you have your microphone symbol that you can click. Maybe that'll help.
He is, he's sending me a picture, a screenshot of his phone screen, the other one, and it's just, it's on speaker, so it's not muted. It's, it's on speaker ready. He says, we gotta keep trying something here. There's gonna be something on this end that we're doing wrong. What are the other options up there?
The option that I can, I can press a button that says ask to unmute. And I don't know what that sends, if that sends him a message on the other end saying, press star six.
So perhaps we've sent you that message, Representative, that says ask to unmute. Maybe you're gonna be prompted for permission for us to unmute you? I don't know. I don't know if anything's come through since we sent that. What are the options on the right there, all the options?
So the options up here, it says to unmute audio, disable talking, rename, hide, non-video participants, or remove. But when I click unmute, it doesn't look like it does anything.
Well, this is not going well.
Paradox of technology.
I don't know what to say.
Does he have the Zoom app on his phone?
He says just go on with the meeting. He can hear us, but obviously wanted to have his input.
Can he call in with his phone and go on speakerphone?
Not so potential.
It's not a perfect solution, but better than what we're working on now.
What do you, what do you think, Representative? Would you like to call into my phone and I could put you on speaker next to the microphone here for the town? Just my cellphone that you're texting. That means I have to unmute my phone. Good evening.
Hey, buddy.
There we go. All right, we have you on here now. I'll put you next to the microphone. Hopefully, people can hear you at home. Welcome. Where do we begin? Obviously, I've asked you, and I know you've talked with Selectman Urban before. We have many roads in town left that don't have any cable access and also therefore don't have decent internet access. And between teachers at a home and people that live there with students, it makes a problem for a lot of people in town. And we've had no success dealing with the cable company to try to get a reasonable solution to fix. They gave us an estimate of something in the neighborhood of $700,000 or $800,000 to run cables down the last four or five roads in town. And there's nothing, I believe, and we do have our chairman of our cable committee with us, Joshua Smith, tonight. I believe there's nothing in our contract that coerces them to run any cables unless there's something in the neighborhood of 10 houses per mile for a density on roads. So kind of wanted to pick your brain, see if you have any ideas or solutions or things we might not have thought of. I'll give the other Selectman a chance to pipe in before we let you answer. So Matt, want to go ahead, please, and then we'll get to Dylan? I mean, either either?
Yeah, I'm curious about the other state programs where there may be potentially grant assistance or other things that could also help us supplement our upgrades that we're looking to do, as well as any information he might have about how previous communities may have accomplished a similar issue.
Okay. Representative, could you hear Selectman Urban?
I can.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure before we went too far. Anything else, Matt, or should we let Dylan?
No, that's it for me right now.
Okay. And Dylan, anything else do you want to add or?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the program called Massachusetts Broadband Institute, if that's going to have any increase in funding in upcoming budget? Or is that just a relic of the past that looks like it's kind of been flatlining for several years? Or if there are any other, any other ways that we can get some state funding?
Okay, Donnie, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so I can tell you from my experience, I negotiated a contract twice when I was Selectman Spencer. And cable companies are historically the hardest to deal with because they kind of have a monopoly. They told you, Greg, I think, they own all the wires. So it's hard to get somebody else to come in because they'd have to rent, you know, the current company's wires. So it would be cost prohibitive to them. So we did twice. Excuse me, once was to cover more parts of the town, and another time was to get more money for the cable access studio. It was just on negotiations. And I think you guys are up soon, right?
Jessica's shaking her head no.
No.
It's 2029.
2029? Oh, I thought it was up sooner than that.
It was, and you guys just did it. Okay.
Joshua's saying 2024, but I'm.
All right, so Joshua's saying 2024, so we'd still be three years out.
Okay, well, I mean, I mean, you could start that now. As far as mass broadband, I know we tried to do that. I was working with Andrew on that, but you guys didn't qualify because, you know, population, demographics, whatever. And I can check into that, see if there's any changes to that or try to push them. The other way we could do it is, I mean, I could try to do a budget amendment. It would be net.
So it, so it sounds like that program helps more populated places.
So mass broadband rewired, I mean, got most of Hubbard, so we got it to nine, I'm sorry, Hardwick, to 95% maybe?
Okay. And what is it that we didn't qualify because we had too much coverage or?
You know, I can't remember. It had to do with demographics, maybe population or size. It was a couple of years ago we were doing it. So I can check back and get back to you.
And I think somebody had asked before about the possibility of running wires extending out from a different town into our town with a different company. Is that permissible or is that?
You know, I don't know. That's probably a contract.
Okay. That would be another thought, to allow another company to come down those roads. In some cases, it may be closer from a different town line to come in than to come through ours, but it may be a different provider.
There's a difficulty with adding another wire to the poles because the poles in this town, if I'm correct, are jointly owned between National Grid and Verizon. And each pole is giving them a lot of space per utility. And I think there's one space for the town to do their own thing. We would have to make sure we knew what National Grid and Verizon allowed for us to figure out what we could put on that part of the pole and then determine if that's the next step to take. But it is, there are some regulations involved with who gets to add another wire to a set of the poles in town. And it falls somewhere under, I forget what they call it. It's like a joint use something group or department or something where any town, like a pole gets knocked down, it goes to National Grid, and then National Grid has to report it to this group that then tells everybody that owns something on that pole, it's time to move your wires to the new pole. But there's a little bit involved with that. That's all I mean, right?
Right. And I know right now we're doing that. National Grid comes there first, they replace the pole, and Verizon is supposed to remove it when they're done because they're last in the pole, I believe. And they're supposed to remove it. We did, I think I asked Representative Berthew, he said, we do have the right to run our own wires. So we could hire out a company to run cable down to these houses. But then we'd be looking at finding companies to do it, going out to bid for the town to run those cables. And we'd probably need to determine in advance if, you know, Charter would be willing to use those wires once we ran them, or if we'd have to donate those to Charter, or how that would work. I don't know if Representative Berthew has any idea on how that works? If we'd still own it, or if we'd have to lease it to Charter or something? Or how would that work if we run our own?
I'm not sure on that either. But I mean, if you put all these together, I can find out that there are two, the answers to all these questions.
Okay, so if we get these possibilities, we'll find out what you can and can't do and go from there. You know, hoping, hoping you'd have something for a grant up your sleeve or some good suggestion for us, but.
Yeah, the NBI was the big one because that was so, like New Braintree got money. And because New Braintree is one house every five miles, they were looking at a wireless internet cable thing there. So that's what they're looking into.
The 5G?
Do you want a list of the roads that aren't serviced?
We do, yes.
Can you, can you get that to me?
Certainly.
If you can get that to me and all these questions, I can find out very quickly the answers for you.
Appreciate that.
One other thing I would like to just put into the, I guess, question out to Donnie is, one of the things that I've become aware of through discussions is, apparently, there's no real state regulatory authority on internet, hardwired internet in a town. So despite the fact that there may be something that requires the cable company to negotiate with the town every 10 years or something, and we can do that for TV. And the Department of Public Utilities has a role with National Grid and other quote-unquote monopolies in towns. Hardwired internet is not regulated by the state. And is there any, due to the increased need of reliable internet throughout the state, has the state actually considered creating a regulatory authority for that?
Can find out that too, but I can tell you that with the onset of this virus, that's a big issue with all the remote schooling and remote work sessions. So there is a big push for that now, so.
So if they were doing some regulation, they might also consider some kind of mandate for these cable companies that they're gonna have to supply this?
Okay, well, the state funded all those wireless hotspots. There was one in, was it New Braintree Fire Department? Did you guys get one up there, close up there?
I don't know. We, not, not near in our town.
Okay. Yeah, because you had, you had decent cable coverage. You said, do you know what percentage of your town is covered?
With cable? I don't know, but I would guess it's over 90%, wouldn't you say, Matt? Do you remember how many houses?
Mostly due to the population on the roads that aren't covered is rather sparse, and that's one of the reasons they're not covered.
Right.
Yeah, that's the issue we had with Hardwick. Some of the last few houses was, there was one house down a 4,000-foot roof. So they covered so much, and then what they were doing was letting homeowners pay a reduced rate. Like if you had a super long driveway, you could, they would give you a reduced rate to get the cable to your house. That's what the broadband money was for. But I mean, that's the best roof. We can check into that and see if, see if we can get you some of that would be great.
That would. We did get $100,000 allowed for us at town meeting to use towards this project. But we promised the town, we're not just gonna go buy $100,000 and see where it goes. We're gonna try to get the best bang for the buck. Try to get some matching funds, grant funds, get some cooperation with, with the cable company. Maybe if we pony up so much, they'll do a reduced rate or eat some of it and try to get these customers online, you know, which it is more customers for them. I believe it's a few hundred customers when it's all said and done.
Did you guys just, so did you just sign a five-year deal in 2014 and in '14? Or was it a 10-year deal in 2014?
Joshua, could you answer that for us if we unmute you here? Let me see if we can get you on, online here. We're gonna bring Josh in as a panelist. Josh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Thank you.
The, yeah, the answer to the question is that we did our contract negotiation in 2014. It's a 10-year contract. And as, as was already mentioned, it's, it has nothing to do with the internet, right? It's a cable TV and, you know, PEG funding contract.
Okay, so it was 10 years and it runs out in 2014, and it's for PEG fund and cable.
Is there, is there a re-opener in there at all?
Is there a re-opener in there at all?
Sometimes there's a reopening, I suppose.
I don't think so. I mean, not, not unless there was, you know, you know, gross underperformance or something like that, right? They'd have to really break the charts.
Because I know some towns would do a 10-year, and then at five years, they would have a clause now where you could get back, had to renegotiate for certain things. I didn't know if you guys had one. Some do, and some, some don't do that.
No, he says no such clause.
Okay, okay. So can Jessica email a copy of that contract?
Yeah, she says yes.
Or a hard copy, what it would want to do?
Or a hard copy, either way. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just making my notes here as we go. So it'd be wise, I think, either way, Josh, we get into the next one to do a five-year re-opener. Maybe to try to see what we can do to work on coverage in the negotiations for the, for the contract.
Yeah, we tried really, really hard, and I think that, given that, you know, the shifts that have happened in the industry since then, right, and you'll, you'll put your hopes in that because we tried really hard to just get a better formula, and, and they wouldn't budge. We were trying to get a formula that would say that they would only charge people the amount that it would cost if everybody on the road signed up, and they wouldn't even agree to that. So it, it, they were, they, they basically were in a position where they held all the cards. The only card that they were willing to play was, you know, raising the franchise fee to pay for PEG funding, which is great, and it's, you know, it's been very helpful here. But honestly, that doesn't come out of their pocket. That comes out of the subscribers' pockets. So they don't, you know, they just don't care.
So I guess a better.
Right, they're historically hard to deal with. And I mean, the PEG funding, he's right. They'll give you whatever those people pay for that. But to get anything else above and beyond, that they are absolutely hard to negotiate with.
And is this something that the state could work on, on regulating? Because this is an unregulated market in many aspects. They, they take what they want for funds, they offer what they want for channels. You know, there's no such thing as getting 25 bucks worth of TV anymore. You know, a cheap, a cheap package is $50 or $60, and you get nothing for it, you know?
I mean, cable?
Yeah.
Almost $300 for a lot.
Yeah, we pay almost $300 for everything here. It's insane, so.
It is insane, it is.
No phone. We don't even have a home phone anymore. We all use cell phones.
Right.
But, but the good thing, like I said, the good thing about this, or the one, one of the few good things about the virus is it's brought out of attention to this. And the cable is the main internet for most towns, you know, around here. So it's certainly a bargaining chip and a leverage tool. That 100 grand could be used as leverage probably with them. But Josh said that they don't like to deal. So I mean, I wouldn't put a lot of stock in it, but we can try it. We can certainly try it. Ann and I, I call Ann's office, we can send a ton of emails and try to put pressure on them.
You know, we'd certainly appreciate that. We need it. And I think there's probably a lot of small towns like us, you know, the, the big cities don't care. They have it. They've got the population density. They have the coverage where they want it. But, you know, this is more of the same thing with it that we always rumble about out here is, we, you know, taxation without representation. You know, we, we pay our fair share of taxes out here in the middle part of the state, but we watch a money funnel for, for schools and, and roads and everything else disproportionately towards the large cities. And we just don't get the same assurances and the same quality that the big cities get. You know, we're not guaranteed internet, we're not guaranteed cable. It's frustrating that we just don't seem to have the, the same attention out here. And I don't know what else we can do to get that attention.
I can tell you that's what got into this. I was a Selectman for 10 years and shared your frustration, so, and it is an uphill battle on Beacon Hill. Ann's really good, she's been a while, and I like to yell at people, so, so it's, yeah. I mean, we try, but it is an uphill battle.
It's, it's frustrating because I think that the population densities in, you know, Boston, Springfield, Worcester, places like that drive the vote for this entire state, no matter what the rest of the state thinks. And obviously politicians gotta listen to those votes. But I don't know how else we address that and try to get some equality out here for it. It's frustrating that a cable company can have that much power and authority and that we can't regulate it. And I don't know why the state wouldn't see that, especially with what's going on with the pandemic and education, why they wouldn't see that and collectively really make a move for it. I mean, maybe, maybe now is the time to push for that up on the floor and try to get someone to, to listen.
You're right. And if you can get me all this in an email and that thing, I mean, I can talk with Ann and, and we can do our best for you.
All right. And maybe we can get a petition coming from folks in town and have people sign it that are having these problems. We do have a couple online tonight, and I'd like to take a moment now if anybody wants to comment on this topic that's called in. I see a couple. Claire, and I can't read them all. I know the Donsons will probably want to comment. If you raise your hand, we could bring you into the meeting and let you have a comment here. No one raising a hand yet?
I'm guessing Christina Ortiz had her hand up, but we must have covered what she was originally gonna ask about.
I know the Donsons were very interested in this, and I thought they'd have comment, but perhaps not. Quite frankly, I can't read the rest of them from here, but.
The other.
I see Claire up there.
Yeah, we have Claire and then Deb Culver.
Deb Culver.
Do you have the ability to put an email address on the screen there and tell them? They can email you any concerns they have.
Yeah.
Sure. We'll let Jessica work on that. She can.
I can put it in the comments.
She can do that technology stuff, put it in the comments, all right. I just got a text message. Now, I just got a text message from John Dotson. He just said, thank you for looking out for us in Jewett Road. Um, so he's not gonna come on and comment, but he just did send a message through. So they, they are, they are listening and that's their concern. That's one of our roads that doesn't have, uh, the service.
Um, you might have asked Josh a question?
Go ahead.
Josh, um, are we stuck with Charter Spectrum? Or when we get to the twenty twenty-four period, we can kind of bid that out and see if another place wants to take over the town's cable service? Or do you just have it and that's it?
Charter owns the lines. They own the wires. They bought the wires from the previous, you know, incumbent providers for them. So, the, the issue is that, you know, whether somebody, if anybody else wanted to come in, it's not an exclusive contract. If, if, you know, RCN wanted to come, Cox wanted to come provide service, they could.
Well, I'm gonna lose you here. Hold on.
The issue is that the only way they would do that.
Can you call him on your phone? You got the cell? He's just saying, give us a cell. My battery just died.
Because on the telecommunications app, they're not necessarily a carrier in the way that they could be forced to do it. The Verizon would have.
Then he gave me his email address, but you already have it, I assume.
Stuff on their wires. So.
So you're gonna call back the, um,
The eight two.
Eight one, the eight, eight one.
Because it would cost them, you know, literally tens of millions of dollars to run new lines on top of the poles to provide that service. And then they'd have to get people to switch. Um, so, you know, it, our, our, our agreement doesn't force us into having only one provider. It simply, um, sets up a bunch of terms for how Charter is to behave on our poles.
Okay.
And as I mentioned before, it's got nothing to do with the internet because the, the telecommunications act ninety-six says that localities aren't allowed to, uh, negotiate regarding internet service.
So we're not even allowed to negotiate for internet?
No, we, no, it was, our, our lawyer was very clear with us when we were negotiating the contract. And even though we were all thinking about the internet all the time, we couldn't ever use that word. We were only talking about cable TV because the, um, the federal legislation that enables us to even have these franchise agreements is strictly about cable TV.
And we still have something we haven't talked to. I don't know if we have. We haven't talked to Verizon. And just so everybody knows, uh, my, my cellphone just died. It's, uh, three years old. It's probably time to get a new one soon. So we're trying to get Jessica to get representative back on and, and her phone. But I, I lost my contact with them because my phone is dead. Um, but hopefully we'll get him back on here in a minute. We do have his email address, um, put up in the comments portion online here. So anybody zoomed in, um, can get his email address if you wanna contact him with your concerns directly. Um, I would encourage everyone to do so. The more comments going to him, the better. Um, and we'll have to post that on maybe the website during the week. So people who are not on Zoom, um, but are joining us can also get that email address, uh, later. Hopefully we'll get him back.
I don't know if you rec, you probably didn't recognize my phone number, so I'm just gonna send him a text.
Yeah, shoot him a text first and just say, you know, Greg's phone died. This is Jessica. He was just asking me to make sure you had his contact info so he could message you directly. Um, that's, that's what I just got before I, I lost it. So Dylan, something on your mind here?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Josh, um, is there any way, I've been reading a little bit about, um, some communities in western Mass that have been operating in a sort of municipal, uh, municipal cooperative style. Um, is there any, is there any way that the town perhaps could lease, lease the, uh, hardware from Charter and we could manage it, uh, with some sort of municipal scheme? Is there, do you know anything along those lines?
I mean, I don't. I mean, I know, you know, obviously Petersham, um, is, you know, um, it is, they, they, they floated a bond. They ran wires and they, they now, uh, providing internet to their people. Um, so, you know, it's obviously something that can be done. Whether you could do that, um, without, um, running your own wires is something I've, I haven't heard floated. I, um, I mean, it, it's not like Charter's lines are something that could be easily be used. So I, I, you know, I suppose you could try to do a, a, a taking, you know, kick them out, um, and, you know, uh, take their property. I, I, I don't think you could force them to, to let you use their wires because these protocols, the DOCSIS protocols that are used over cable systems, I mean, they're not really designed for that. They're not designed to have multiple people riding on the same, um, you know, the same piece of coax. So, yeah, I, that doesn't sound to me like something that can happen. Uh, I don't know.
Right. I think the wires are mutually exclusive.
Like Petersham, they, they started whole cloth, right, with a, with a system, with a.
Yeah, yeah. And they, they did, yeah, they actually, I think they ran fiber, um, so that they could provide, you know, uh, you know, gigabit level service, which would be challenging on the, um,
Have you got him yet?
coax lines that, that they're.
I can't even look the number off my phone. It's dead.
I don't know the details.
You can try him on the eight-two number as well.
I doubt very much that the town in Petersham is operating.
He does have that phone.
They hired somebody who knows how to run a, a system like that, to run it for them.
Uh, I was reading a little bit about, um, municipalities using, uh, uh, under the, using the umbrella of a municipal light, uh, you, municipal light department to run, uh, to provide internet to the residents. Have you heard about that?
Well, yeah, I think most of the towns that try and do it happen to also have that setup. So if you think about a town like Sterling that has their own municipal light department, those guys are used to, you know, putting wires between holes, right? They, they're, that's kind of part of how they do business. They also have an income stream. They have, they have sophisticated infrastructure for handling customer complaints. All that kind of stuff that you have to have if you're gonna, um, be running a, you know, a service like that. So it's more natural for a, for a, uh, a municipality like that to do it. Um, and, you know, but we're not one of those towns, right? We don't have any of that experience. So, um, yeah.
And what would you say would be, um,
Welcome back, Don.
So, so there's one thing I learned during this virus and the eight thousand phone calls it's been on is always keep your phone charged. Just letting you know.
Uh, we're, um, we're over talking to the other guys right now. So we'll just hold on a minute.
To set up the situation of like Petersham and so many other small towns did and just, uh, sort of not renew our contract and just replace, replace our current system, uh, with something more like Petersham's when our contract is up.
Well, that's a political question. Do you think that you can, um, get the town to vote for an override for a bond issue of, what, six, ten million dollars to run wires? I don't know. Uh, it seems unlikely to me, but if you guys can do that, then I guess that could work.
We have a very charismatic town moderator, I feel like, if anything knows at the, at the town meeting. So, thanks for answering that question.
So my, my other thought, we've got Donnie back now. My phone died. Uh, Jessica's, uh, got Representative Berthew back on, on speaker with us. So he is here again. Um, I do see we have a, someone Kimberly Roach, is it saying, just came in. I don't know if they have a comment they wanna make.
Uh, that's our labor council.
That's our labor council. Oh, well, there we go. So. So did they come in because somebody asked them or did they come in with a comment or something?
We have executive session.
Oh, just waiting for that. Well, very well then. Never mind. Um, my thought too is that we haven't really done much discussion about, um, talking to Verizon and maybe fiber optic, uh, with Verizon. I don't know if, if they'd be more willing to talk to us about going, um, at least to the unserviced homes for internet. I don't know if either of you have reached out and see what the representative thinks about that. If we, can we, can we ask municipality contact Verizon to ask them about internet for these homes? Or are we not even allowed to do that?
I, I don't know if you can or can't. And I'm not familiar with that. I know, what was that, FiOS or something that Verizon was doing?
Right.
Somebody told me a little while ago that they're gonna stop doing that. I don't know how accurate that is, but, um, I have a really good contact at Verizon. And I mean, I could call them more and find out absolutely, especially if you could get me that list of the roads that are unserviced.
All right. Cause what, what Josh had said was something to the effect that municipalities are not allowed to get involved in bidding or talking about the internet, correct?
Well, what, no, we, you could certainly invite, um, you could make, um, inquiries over to Verizon. Ask them if they'd be interested in providing internet service. What we're not allowed to do is regulate.
We can't co, so we can't contract with them, but we can certainly con, contact. We can contact.
Terms of their service and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
You have to treat them the same way you treat the phone company.
All right.
Is a, is a good way to say it. Is that, that they're not, it's not like a cable system where you have a franchise.
All right. So, yeah, that, that, we'll put that on our list of things we'll ask you to look into. Representative Berthew, maybe whether or not we can get anywhere with Verizon on servicing that list of roads that we'll have. Um, you know, I don't know, I would assume they're off their regular phone lines, they get a limited service. I know they can do not dial up. They can do like a DSL or something off the line. Which is better than nothing, but not necessarily i- as good as we're looking for.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that could be in that or high stock. I'm really, I'm not sure about the specifics, but I mean, I, once again, I can certainly find out for you.
Okay.
We'll continue to build out. If there's already FiOS, they'll expand. But if you have a municipality that doesn't have any FiOS, you're not gonna get FiOS. But they may have other options along the lines of DSL because, uh, there are, there are improved versions of DSL that they may be able to offer. You can certainly talk to them.
Okay. I don't know if you hear what, what Josh was saying, Donnie, was that, um, it really depends. If we already have FiOS here, they could extend it. But if we don't, it's not necessarily something they're gonna bring out. But I believe we have FiOS run to our municipal buildings. So I believe they have it in.
You can get fiber run to your.
Fiber optic.
Through the municipal broadband, but that's not fiber.
All right.
Is actually Verizon's branded wire.
So we have a fiber optic wire in town, but we don't necessarily have any specific cable service to that fiber optic wire?
Okay.
You don't have Verizon fiber.
Okay. Do, do you know, Josh, offhand, where that fiber wire came from? Who owns it? Is it a Verizon fiber or is it a cable fiber?
Well, actually, the, the state of Massachusetts provided that. So that's, um, that municipal broadband initiative that you mentioned earlier.
Okay.
So what they agreed to do was to run fiber to, um, this building, um, the school, uh, the other school, those kinds of places. A few places. And there actually is fiber there. Um, and the deal was that you would have to contract with a company to light up that fiber and provide internet service. And I don't, I, the last I knew, the companies that were offering a service were charging ridiculous fees for it. So it didn't make any sense. Jessica might know, have a better idea of where it best stands, where you guys are getting your internet from. But in theory, there is fiber that you could light up for town. You could also connect other people to it. That's how Petersham is connecting their internet, the, the internet that they ran on the poles to the internet, right? They're, you have to, you have to connect into the internet somewhere. That's how they did it, using the municipal broadband. So there's a trunk coming into Barry. It's capable of connecting to the rest of the internet on fiber, extremely high bandwidth. But I don't know that you actually lit it up.
So it might also be possible to have a different company run wires down these last roads and connect to that fiber trunk line and supply internet from a different provider through that fiber cable, depending where it goes to. I don't even know where it goes.
You could do that. And in fact, if you think about it that way, now you're not talking about running lines to everyone in Barry, which would cost maybe ten million dollars. You're talking about running lines to those unserviced areas. Maybe that's, maybe that's more important.
Okay.
And that would be a good question for legal counsel if I heard correctly that, I, I don't know if, um, cable company would appreciate, you know, somebody else servicing some of the houses in the town. They have a contract. I mean, you could. I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I wouldn't know. I don't know, um, contracts, you know, I've negotiated some, uh, but on like, like the selectman side. So I don't, I don't know the ins and outs. That would be a good question for town council.
So we need to ask town council whether or not we can actually contract out for different companies since we're under a contract with Charter.
Yeah, yeah, I would. I mean, it sounds like it's a legal issue that Charter would have an issue with. Uh, you know, you, you would think, maybe not, maybe not.
Josh is saying, no, they don't have a mutually exclusive, right.
As long as you don't go near TV, there can't possibly be an issue because if you're only talking about internet service, that's unregulated, right? People can get internet service.
Okay.
Lots of ways.
Gotcha.
From satellites, from telephone, right? All sorts of options.
Right. All right. So what Josh is saying is if we do it strictly as an internet service, it's got nothing to do with the charter because we can't regulate a contract, the internet.
Oh, true. Yeah, true. That's a good angle, right?
So we could look, so we can look at that angle. Um, i- if not getting charter service to people, we can look at the angle of getting them internet strictly in, in looking, and we haven't really looked at it that way, I don't think. Matt, I don't know if you've considered it that way? As internet only? Matt, can you hear me? I think you have a call coming in.
Yes. All right. I had a, I had my cursor sitting on a different software program. So when I hit the space bar, it just was hitting space a hundred times.
All right.
Rather than unmuting me. Um, yeah, I think it, it comes back down to better understanding the layout of what fiber we did have installed. So we know what parts of the, the town that already is crossing. Cause then we'll have a better idea of where those wires might connect and be these underserved areas. They may not really be adjacent. So if we've gotta run a long run from one end of town to the other to cover it, um, it's hard to say if it would be useful, but the, the one benefit it is, is the longer you run it, the more potential customers you have to tap into. So, um, and ultimately that would be something that, that we, even if just the town decided over time, we would continue to expand that, we would own it. So we could start doing an RFP to sell that wire service to somebody over and over and over. You know, and every five or every ten years, we, we go up the bid again and we get someone that can serve our town better than Charter Spectrum. And I think one thing that Charter Spectrum will be short sighted on, especially if we start taking that initiative is internet's gonna take over TV soon. So they'd have nothing to stand on with TV if that's all they're standing on because the more I look at it, it's not worth paying my cable bill. As long as I can get internet, I don't need TV. So I'll just pay for the internet, get rid of the TV and then I'll buy my different channel subscriptions. So I mean, we're getting to a point where if Spectrum keeps holding strong, they're gonna run themselves out of business. Cause yes, we could just rewire the town ourselves and then sell it off to the lowest bidder.
Um, well, when it comes to rewiring the town, I think we need to locate some private vendors that would run wires on poles. First of all, as Selectman Urban has said, we need to find out where we can run stuff on the pole, where our space is on there. And, um, maybe draw up a, an RFP for, for running wire, what it's gonna include. We, you know, we need to know what we're, what we're asking for. We asking for just wires. Do we need booster boxes so often, battery backups? I don't know all that's gonna be involved. Strictly internet speaking at this point. Um.
So, so there's a bunch of companies that do that. Uh, one thing you gotta find out is in some places Verizon owns the poles and some places, um, Grid owns the poles and some they're a J O pole that join owned. Um, so that, you know, when a car or, or a pole goes down because of a storm.
Josh, Josh, can you hold on one second? Uh, uh, thank you. So go, go ahead, Donnie. Finish.
So it just depends on who owns the pole, you know? So I don't know if you guys, like I know in some towns, I think East Perfield's either all Verizon or all National Grid. Um, I know in Spencer, we're split. There's a bunch of different ones. I don't know if you have an exclusive one or if yours are split from different ones because that'll, that'll determine what could go on the poles. Like you were questioning before, the amount of wires and how far.
We, we have a mix of ownership between, a- as I recall from the fire department side, we have a mix of ownership between, um, National Grid and Verizon. And in the agreement they came up with just a couple of years ago, cause we, we had issues with who, who's responsible for taking the poles away. And I believe.
Yeah, yeah. When you replace it, right?
Right. So the companies came up with the agreement that when, when there's a pole that's damaged, National Grid will come out and replace the pole because they have to get their power up high first. National Grid will come out and replace the pole, because they have to get their power up high first. And then the other companies come in and do their work, and Verizon should come last and remove the pole. So I don't know if it really matters. I think no matter whose pole it was, I think that's the agreement they've worked out in town. But the poles are owned with the combination.
Once again, you can find out who owns them if you give me the streets. You know, the involved streets you're talking about with the houses that aren't served.
Certainly.
Yeah, so I can find out.
Who owns poles on the unserviced streets? All right. Go ahead, Josh, so you can finish up that comment. I just, I can hear you both, and I'm sure people are getting, you know, both at the same time, which should be frustrating for them.
I was just suggesting that maybe perhaps you as a select board should reach out to the select board up at Peter Sam. To talk to them about their committee that did their broadband initiative and maybe get the, whatever contractors they're using up there who are operating their service to come and talk to you. And just explain what happened. What did they do? How much did it cost? You know, what's the per mile cost? And what's the long-term operating agreement?
That's a good idea. Get a better idea of what they did. And as I said, I don't know what we're contracting for. Is it just wire? Is it wire and boosters? Is it wire boosters and certain connections for houses? And I don't know. I assume every time you tie a house, and there's going to be a certain termination point, depending what type of a wire you run, whether it's a fiber or it's a cable. So I don't know if they're just T-tapped in or how those work. I did security systems for a lot of years. And every time that you tie in, there's going to be some sort of connection there. So whether that requires any sort of power supply or backup or waterproof connection, those are all the things we need to figure out before it goes out to bid. But I think we've got a good list of going of things to check with, to have representative look into for us.
Do you guys need every two weeks?
Every two weeks, yes.
So do you want to give me that list? And then I can either get your answers or I can come back on if you have more questions in two weeks, or two.
Sure, that'd be great. I'd love to have you back in two weeks. So we can get this list we've talked about, and we'll have people, once again, we put the representative's email address up in the comments section on Zoom. And if somebody wants to email the representative, otherwise they can call into the office. I don't know if I necessarily want to put it up on the website, but we could. Do you have a problem with that? If we put it on the website, Donnie, or your email address?
No, you can, you can put my cell phone on there if you want. I give it to everybody, so. If people comfortable talking, just give myself the, you can put that on there.
I appreciate that, but I probably won't. We'll put the email and keep it on.
Listen, I've had like three people in six years that have been told, don't call me. It's not as bad as you think, so.
We all have a couple there. All right, so we'll get that out there. So everyone else, if you want to call the representative or send them an email, things you'd like him to look into for us, before we hear from him again in two weeks, we'll get that information up online. As I said, the email address is up in the comments section now on Zoom. Same thing, Josh, Matt, and Dylan, if you have anything else you can think of or any questions that you want to have him answer, that you come up in the next few days, we can get that out there. And, you know, see where we can go from here. I think we got a lot, we've talked about a lot of options on the table. I think I'm liking the idea of targeting internet only, because it doesn't violate an agreement with Charter. And there is no regulation that stops us from talking to anyone to see what they'll do. And maybe a couple of different companies might give us an idea that if we did X, Y, or Z, then they could come in and do it, you know? What kind of setup they need from us that we can look into. So we can start finalizing a plan of what we're going to do and what we're going to look for grant money for, if we can get it, and what we're going to have to fund. I'd like to try to get a picture together before town meeting, if we can. So if we need to go for funding for this, we have a proposal to put forward to the town with a finite plan that we can move forward with, so. Anything else you guys think of, definitely bring those comments forward. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I know Princeton also ended up having to work out something around their own wires that are having the same problem with, I think they have Comcast, but I'm not certain. It might have been Spectrum at the time. And the cable company was fighting them nonstop. And Princeton went to the state, tried to get, I think it was the NBI funding or something, or a grant. And just as they were about to get everything started, the cable company jumped right back in, which undermined the grant at first, because the grant was based on the fact that the cable company refused to assist them. I think eventually what they did is they came up with a kind of a mixed bag. So they got the lines running town. But most people acquired internet via the app that the cable company provided, rather than an actual receiver in the house. So I'm not sure, but that might be something else to look at, where you weren't getting a full service from the cable company. But what you were getting was access to their channel lineup and their internet, et cetera. But I think Princeton also does have their own municipal light company. But one of the things you can also look at is, once the lines are up, just like Worcester does. So Worcester has all kinds of streetlights they own. They don't have a municipal light department. But they own the maintenance on all the wires for all their underground poles, because of the way the agreement back in 2009, when they bought this, the streetlights. So what they do is, they hire a contractor. And the contractor's on call, if they need an issue, the contractor goes and fixes the wire that goes down. So it's, you're not maintaining the overhead. You're just using the contractor as needed to maintain the system. So that's one other thing. So when you talk to Peter Sam, it might be worth looking into Princeton to see what, how they developed it, and then how we could fill in the gap. Because we don't have a municipal light company, it could be a different option. Also, the other thing I wanted to just bring up briefly is, I really don't want to get so lost in creating a whole alternate system that we actually never provide our residents internet while we have the $100,000 to do something with it. So I do think we need to know our options, but we still need to sit at the table with Spectrum, Charter. And if we have options, we can actually explain to them during our discussion, we have options, what are you willing to do to work with us to extend our service throughout town? We're already started with the fact we're bringing money to the table, so we're not sitting here asking them to do it for free. But I am sure if they know that their total investment to get customers is not completely based on their own investment, but we are chipping in the money, they'll come down on those original prices. Especially if they understand that some of these roads, one of the reasons you don't have more customers is there's no cable. So it's harder to develop the whole neighborhood if you constantly say, I'm not going to invest in it. So we've just got to kind of also choose how we approach Spectrum with it, so that they understand that we want to work with them as a partner, not necessarily just demand something from them.
Right. Obviously, there's something in it for them, there's more customers as we do this, and the potential for even more, because of the undeveloped lots that are out there that clearly, you know, it's the low-demand places to live, because there is no service for like that, for cable or internet. Makes it hard to sell a home there and develop it, so. I agree, we definitely have to talk to them. And, you know, I'm sure they'd rather, we'd rather keep it with one company than bring someone else in to service it. But I think we need to make sure we check our costs both ways. You know, if you do get a better price somewhere else, that is a bargaining chip with Charter. You know, so-and-so can do it for this much, and, you know, we just need to start taking more action on it. We've been talking about it for too long. You know, we've been spinning our wheels, we've gotten nowhere. And we have a great chance here now to get answers to certain questions, to know what we can and can't do. I'm sure that Representative Berthew can get with Angobi, and they can see if there is more funding, more grant money they can make available for something they can look into next year's budget, to make funds available for something like this. And I think this is a good time to have the discussion, as budget season is approaching. You guys have anything else for the representative before we give him his time back?
No further questions for me, but I appreciate his time. It's been very much.
Okay. Anybody online want to raise their hand, have a question or anything before we let the representative go? Does it look like it? Representative Berthew, thank you very much for being here tonight. We look forward to hearing from you in two weeks. And I'm sure Jessica will get you the list. She does have your text now, as you know. And we'll get you that list of things we're looking into, and, you know, anything you guys can do at the state level, you know, facilitate discussions with the cable company or with even Verizon about FiOS, if they're willing to do it, or what it would take for us to get a service from them, what's available from them. We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can look at all this stuff, and thanks, yeah. Anytime you need me to come on, or, I certainly will. And Jessica, I'm guessing this is your cell phone you sent me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, so send me that, and I'll get back to you soon as I can.
Appreciate it, thank you, and have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Tell Wendy we said hi.
Thank you much.
Thank you. All right. That was a fun start to it. We'll go backwards here, do a quick public comment period, if anybody wants to have a public comment about that topic or anything, before we move on with the regular business. I'll look for raised hands for a moment. None. Okay, we'll move on to the first order of new business today. Other than the conversation, we have the 2021 Common Particular Entertainment and Motor Vehicle License Renewals List. You guys have that list before you? I assume it's in their packets. I assume some of these that don't have numbers, check numbers next to them, just haven't paid yet?
So there are a couple of them. For example, on the motor vehicle license, BC Auto and PNF, they both paid today. So did J.J. Family Restaurant, they paid today. And A&amp;B Marketing, which is a Class II Motor Vehicle License, they will pay and then get their license at the end of January, when they pay their outstanding real estate taxes.
So we're looking to approve all of these that are listed here, with the caveat that the licenses will not be released to them until they catch up on their real estate taxes or other fees that they owe the town, or these license fees.
Correct. And then also, one other note is that Becky's Bistro will not be renewing until, and Weenie's will not be renewing until a later date. Becky's is just closed right now for personal reasons. And then Weenie's is closed because they are seasonal business, so they won't renew until the spring.
And where is that new smoothie place that I talked to you about before? Is that, it's a name?
So that will be, that's like a new, this is, they're not renewing because they're a new business, so they will be on this list. That's a separate, that will be a separate public hearing.
Okay, because I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah.
And they're still running, right?
I believe so.
Okay. We need to see that soon.
Yeah, I guess my only question on that was just, you know, I would be surprised that they didn't go for a common vic, because they are like a locally owned operation, but they're owned by a bigger business. That would like, like a Dunkin' Donuts, that's kind of a franchise, where they are told exactly X, Y, and Z, what they need to do in order to operate their business. So I'm surprised that they haven't approached the town or they weren't told otherwise.
Have you had a discussion with them about that yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Please do, because I know I brought that up a few weeks ago now.
Yep.
They need to, and I don't know if you've talked to the Board of Health to make sure they're inspected.
Yeah, they're all set from the Board of Health.
They've done that, they just haven't got the license.
Yeah, and they're all set with the town clerk's office and everything, so.
Okay. But that's, they're going to need to do that, so we'll leave that up to you. Just talking about, guys, this new smoothie place in town. I've seen it all over Facebook, and they've never come for a particular license from us, and they still haven't. So I'm just asking Jessica to follow up with that during this week, and let them know they've got to come in and get that application done. They are good with the Board of Health, they've been inspected, and they've done everything else. They just don't have the license from us, as long. Do you guys have any questions about the list? I don't know, we can't, do you guys have any? No? I don't think we need to individual read each of these. The list is, is it online? It is online now, Jessica? It will be published?
Yep.
Okay, it's online and published, so people can look up all the specific names on this list. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 24, 25, 26. We have 28 on the list that will be renewing right now, that is removing Becky's Bistro and Weenie's. I'd look for a motion for the common particular renewals.
I make a motion that we approve the submitted common viculers license renewals as listed, except for Becky's Bistro and Weenie's.
And the caveat, if you would add, about payment before issuance?
There are no caveats regarding the common vicuress license.
Oh, those are all paid?
Yeah.
Oh, I stand corrected, thank you. They paid today.
They got their pay today.
They paid today.
I will second that motion.
Our motion is second to approve the listed common particular licenses as presented here this evening. Any further discussion? Hearing now, a call for vote, all those in favor?
Madam Irvin, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Next, we have 2021 entertainment licenses. They look like they have all paid. Shortlist, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. Camp Cobook RV Resort, The Harding Allen Estate Bed and Breakfast LLC, Title Seafoods, Stone Cow Brewery, Dunkin' Donuts, Hartman's Herb Farm, Northeast Pizza, and the Upper Deck Sports Bar. I'd entertain a motion on those.
I make a motion that we approve entertainment licenses as listed on the agenda, submit the package, and read by Chairman O'Sullivan.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second to approve the entertainment licenses of 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing now, a call for vote, all those in favor?
Don Clark, yes.
Madam Irvin, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. And lastly, motor vehicle license renewals. We have B&amp;C Auto, Higgins Energy Alternatives, White Valley Motors, George Riley, DBA Motor Specialist Company, PNF Services Incorporated, Spring Hill Auto Savage, and A&amp;B Marketing. Jessica, those other ones did pay today, you said?
Yes, so BC Auto and PNF both paid today, and then A&amp;B Marketing will.
Have to catch up on the real estate taxes. So we'd be looking for a motion for those, with the caveat that A&amp;B won't receive their license till they catch up on the real estate taxes.
I would suggest that we actually just make a motion to approve EMBL-21-2 through EMBL-21-7 motor vehicle license requests, renewal requests. A&amp;B can be presented back to us upon completion of paying their back taxes.
I have a motion. I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I have a motion to second to approve um, licenses excluding the A and B marketing. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Don't Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. And we will revisit A and B when they do have their taxes paid. Um, thank you, Matt, for that. That's, that's, was one of my pet peeves in the past is people applying for things when they're not prepared here. And then I'm, I'm glad you didn't let that go. Um, next up on the agenda, Quabbin Regional School District. Request for expenditure of the funds related to the cover letter, um, of the cover of the lease, pardon me, of the H U L D Focus High-Def Camera System in the Quabbin Regional High School Gymnasium from PEG access funds. Jessica, what is going on with that?
So a couple of years ago, Quabbin Regional Schools approached the Select Board, um, requesting that the board uh, release some PEG funds to cover the lease of this huddle-focused high-def camera system to cover athletic um, games, you know, things that happen in the gymnasium, including the basketball games. Um, and so every year since then, I think this was in twenty seventeen that this started, the boards voted every year to um, use PEG funds to cover this lease, which is uh, three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars. And did we, has that already been put in the budget for the PEG access funds to expend that this year?
Um, I don't think we have an expenditure line, like.
I don't know, Matt, you called the we, do we approve PEG funds at the town meeting to spend a certain amount or is it? Just wanna make sure we don't approve money that we can't.
If we do, it probably falls into the, it may be showing in the revolving fund list or something as a total maximum allowed to be spent for a year from that fund.
That's what I was wanting. Josh, do you?
But I, I don't recall if it's that or if it's one of the standard articles, one, two, or three about PEG access funds. But I don't think those ever provide a, the dollar value, just that those funds can be used towards certain purchases. So I'd have to look at it more to be more clear on how that money is determined, how much is determined to be spent each year from that.
Certainly. Josh, would you like to comment on that?
Well, I can do a quick check. I don't recall um, what happened at town meeting regarding PEG. So I can take a quick look at that while you guys talk. My, my only question about the um, using that money, uh, it strikes me as intuitively, that sounds like exactly what PEG money is supposed to be used for.
Yes.
Just like we use PEG money to, you know, to, to uh, provide the cameras in this room, in the room you're sitting in. Um, as long as the feed is actually going to, into the cable system. I don't actually have cable, that's a cable chair. Um, so I have no idea. Do they actually show those huddle feeds on the educational channel?
It's my understanding, yes, that they do. That's streamed on to the television like this meeting is.
Okay. As long as it's going to the TV, that's exactly what that money is for, so I'd be, you know, I think that that's, it's not my place to say. But um, the, the, um, the spending of PEG funds is kind of not really, uh, it hasn't been the responsibility of the uh, the Cable Committee. Um, we've left that, those decisions up to you as an administrative function. Um, but it seems to me that that's kind of what it's.
Right. I, I just didn't recall if, if it's an amount we set aside every year to use upfront or, or not, um.
So.
That I don't know.
Article eight from the town, annual town meeting gave um, the town permission to spend twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
From the access.
Okay, so we do, we did put twenty-five thousand in the revolving account for the PEG access, so we do have it. That answers my question. Alright, look for a motion on that then, gentlemen.
Uh, do we have the top?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Right now?
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand.
Three thousand what we're looking to approve for? But we'll just say the hut, the, the huddle-focused high-def camera, um, they specifically have three thousand exactly? Do we need to just leave that open as, for the cameras?
No, that's three thousand.
Okay, so just three thousand for those cameras? For the access.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expenditure funds. The length of the lease of the huddle-focused high-def camera system in the Quabbin Regional High School Gymnasium, PEG access funds, uh, in the amount of three thousand. I have some more questions. I don't know if you want those now, Greg, or?
No, I'll wait for the second, then we'll do it. Follow our procedure. If need be, we can redo it, but. Alright, I'll second the motion. I have a motion to second. I'll look for any further discussion. Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, Orbit is a regional school district serving five towns. So how many towns are actually participating in funding for this camera system? Or is it just Berry covering the cost for the whole school system? And second, is Berry's cable channel the only one that is actually being televised on?
So those are good questions. So the answer to your first question is that Berry is the only town, to my knowledge, that covers this lease. And in the past, um, the Select Board has requested that if any other towns is using this service, these cameras that they reimburse the town for what they're using. Um, and the second question is that I do believe that if these games that they um, cover are only streamed on Berry's public access channels.
Okay.
Alright, I'm just, one of the reasons I'm asking is all, obviously, we also just spent an amount of our COVID money helping out the school. Um, I'm not trying to knock that, but um, we are, we have been talking about trying to get more and more of our phone boards and committees, either on TV or create some BCTV, YouTube, link through Facebook, things like that. Um, there's a cost involved with that. Every time we ask Rich Deacon to do something for us, um, we pay him an hourly rate to do it. So if we've been doing twenty-five thousand a year, what's our cushion? How much have we, or have we not spent each year for that? Um, do we have the three thousand or do we need to keep that three thousand so we can look at buying new cameras? Or maybe we look to see if we can actually install cameras down at Town Barn for DPW Commission meetings? Or add cameras to another location? Um, I, I, I'm not knocking this. I definitely understand and appreciate the opportunity to do this. But I also think that this isn't, this isn't a major operational fund that the schools shouldn't be able to figure out how to afford.
Very good. Dylan, any comment on that?
Uh, no, I do not have a comment on that.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve these funds. All those in favor?
Don't Clark, yes?
Greg O'Sullivan, yes? Opposed?
Matt Urban, opposed.
Thank you. Passes two to one. Please note Matt was opposed. Um, COVID nineteen update will do from Jessica.
Yes, um, so the town had a really big jump in cases this past week. Um, according to our public counselors, we have thirty-one new cases. Um, and so again, the town is still in the red, which means that, um, you know, we're just a high-risk community. Like I had mentioned last time, there used to be a difference between what businesses and residents would be able to do in a high-risk community. But now every community, regardless of their status in the state, are in the same boat, um, as far as restrictions for businesses and gatherings. Um, and next week, the first responders in town are eligible to receive the first dose of the vaccine. So I guess we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel, um, and vaccines are rolling out. We also had a meeting last week, um, to set, to start planning, um, to set up the Quabbin Regional High School as a vaccine distribution center. Um, we're in the preliminary discussion with this right now. Um, it's really gonna come down to what the costs are gonna be, what the state is gonna cover and um, and just, you know, what capacity we have to distribute these vaccines. Um, it's, it's being really pushed, um, you know, especially in like small towns like Berry, that we do this as a regional effort, um, distributing the vaccine. So the idea would be to have the regional high school as a location for, um, you know, all of the towns in our school district to receive the um, vaccine. But of course, uh, we're not going to set something up that's going to be financially disadvantageous to the town of Berry. Um, but I do know that in the most recent congressional decision on coronavirus funding, they do have vaccine distribution funding included that in that. That's gonna go to the state. So I'll be interested to see how the state decides to distribute the funds, um, to cover this, these expenses.
Any um, update on tents when they might come in, that might be usable for this?
Yeah, so the tents, it was, it was really difficult with um, the holidays because a lot of people took off that time of the holidays. So um, our order hasn't gone through yet, but um, now that we're past the holidays, I think I'll be able to get in touch with someone.
As I recall, there were several weeks out, um, when I was talking to them.
About six weeks.
Right, so. By the time we have um, the ability to vaccinate people in the town, we may be that far out. I don't know, we'll see.
Yeah, we're looking at probably mid-March to the end of March.
What I understand statewide is nationwide even. The um, millions of more doses of vaccine are available. I think it was something they put at twenty million, but it's, it's finding ways to distribute it and doctors and nurses to actually give the injections. It's, it's the, the slow end of this. So we'll see where it goes.
I don't know if this is, this was definitely from the state level that, um, they gave EMT professionals the ability to distribute the vaccine. I guess there's, there's a certain certi- certificate that you have to get to distribute a vaccine and they waived that for EMTs and paramedics. So it kind of expanded, um, our pool of people who can distribute a vaccine.
Quite, quite a bit in our town, yes. Okay, you guys have any questions or comments to go along with the COVID update?
No, I would just say that let's not get deceived and just see a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, despite the fact you're seeing vaccines come out, and that hasn't changed the fact that the numbers are still skyrocketing. So uh, speak patient, we're getting there. We should be much happier late spring, summer, when we actually know what the vaccine's doing in reducing hospitalizations and deaths. But until then, um, nothing's proven. So I would just say, be careful.
Yeah, I absolutely don't wanna underplay, uh, or downplay this, this virus after having it myself. I don't want it again.
No, um, I still, I'll always add the caveat that thirty-one cases in town during flu season, we see hundreds and hundreds of cases. So um, the precautions people are doing, keeping their hands washed, social distancing, wearing a mask. Um, perhaps those are keeping, keeping our numbers down, cuz thirty-one is certainly not a huge spread rate um, in town. So it's nice to see that it hasn't gone to hundreds. It's not just readily passing through town. You know, I don't want people to panic because it's thirty-one. You know, in flu season, you'd see hundreds, if not thousands, of cases that flew at the same time. You know, I think our recovery rate in town is still a hundred percent recover versus death. I don't think we've had any death in town from COVID. So all in all, we're, we're lucky to be in a small town. We're fortunate that we are isolated from some of the larger cities. Although people like, um, it's like, but everybody do go into the city for work. People do go in the cities. Um, but so far, um, you know, we don't have a crazy spread and that's good. Keep up the uh, the diligence and, and hopefully when people start to get vaccinated, these things will relax. But um, as, as Matt said, don't just put your guard down and go back to crazy big parties and, and stuff. Others will start to spread again. And um, you know, whether it causes someone to die or not, it's a painful illness for people. It causes uh, great discomfort, lot of breathing issues. Some people, granted, absolutely nothing, no symptoms, asymptomatic, don't know they have it. But for other people, uh, very painful and um, you know, certainly nobody wants to have. So let's just keep it steady.
I'll, I'll add that we're not that far out from uh, the Christmas holidays and New Years. And you know, the likelihood that there was a little bit more loose uh, interpretation of what was appropriate and people taking some chances, um, there might be a, a huge amount of people who are asymptomatic areas from, from the holiday period. And so I don't, I really don't think we're out of the weeds yet.
Right.
I'll reiterate what uh, it's like I already said, um, we need to keep, keep digital, uh, keep, stay patient.
And certainly, where more people stayed home this year, instead of uh, maybe one in four families putting on a big dinner, most families put on a dinner. So I think trips to the store were up, um, crowds at the stores were up, crowds for shopping, even if it wasn't people gathering. Um, I went out shopping a couple of times. It was pretty crowded in a lot of stores. Um, you know, some people are out there, people had a lot of contract, even without violating the protocols that have been set forth by the state. I think um, just the holiday season that brought many more people to the stores and the grocery stores, certainly probably increased people's exposure to one another, uh, just because it was a holiday, even, even without larger gatherings, so. Um, I think when you see thirty-one in town, it doesn't mean we had a lot of parties in town. I, I think it just means that everybody went out and did some Christmas shopping where they maybe haven't been doing so much. You know, maybe people go to a store, a grocery store once a week and a department store once a month, and maybe they all went four or five times in the last couple of weeks. And, and I would think it's probably more where we see it from. But yep, keep it up, keep up what they're doing and um, see it through.
And just one thought, I, I just noticed the total deaths in Massachusetts. It's over twelve thousand, I think it's like twelve thousand, six hundred, something like that, based on a recent number. It could have been last week, it could have been two days ago, I forget. But just for perspective, that means the town of Berry died more than twice this year. Just to give you an idea of the total number of people that have died in this state, you're pretty much are talking about two towns the size of Berry just disappearing from the map. So just kinda keep that in mind when you're trying to figure out who, who does this affect?
Well.
It affects a lot of people.
We also, we.
You've been blessed and not have affected you or your family directly, but there's a lot of people being affected by this very seriously. So I, it was just a sober thought I had when I saw that number and it, I didn't know of the, the concept of thinking that your whole town dying twice in the last year might be something to give you a different perspective.
Right, and remember that the United States loses over two-point-eight million citizens a year that die. Um, and this last year was no exception. The death toll this last year actually went down slightly from the year before. You know, some would speculate that some COVID deaths are mislabeled and not the only cause. The deaths are similar. But um, certainly if, you know, other deaths are down by CDC listing. But I think it is important to note that um, overall, the death toll for the country from two thousand and nineteen, um, two thousand and twenty remained basically unchanged. We did not have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar uh, death spike or ten percent spike in death nationwide this year. A death toll for the nation held steady over this year as, um, from last year. So however that plays out, COVID killed them instead of diabetes, or COVID killed them instead of their heart disease. Um, the death tolls. Um, the death tolls, um, were similar. It's, you can't read a lot in that, except that they were similar. Um, there's no doubt that COVID has caused death. And, um, there's also no doubt that, um, I have heard of examples from people that they've had loved ones die in a car accident that was labeled a COVID death because they'd been tested positive for COVID. And I don't know how much of that really goes on. There are, there are incentives to label something a COVID death because of CARES Act money that went to hospitals for patients with COVID and patients that died from COVID. But I, I do think it's important that people understand the death toll this year, according to the CDC, was virtually the same as the death toll last year. Typically, over the last ten years, the death toll increases by about two percent per year, and that didn't even happen this year. Um, so no matter what the pandemic's done, the death toll overall hasn't changed. I can't read anything into that to say that it's because COVID killed them instead of some other disease that was going to kill them anyways, or somehow COVID, the restrictions have stopped loss of life somehow. Um, I don't know the car fatalities and things, you know, that could certainly contribute. Um, but overall in the nation, we didn't have a, a ten percent spike in death as they were expecting this year. We had a even death toll this year from last year. So, yes, twelve thousand in Massachusetts is a lot. Um, and, and that's about what we lose and, you know, I don't know how many exactly. I could look up the toll we normally lose, but we lose a lot of people, um, every year in the United States with these two point eight plus million people a year. Um, and, you know, other than COVID, a lot of those deaths come from drug abuse, alcoholism, COPD, heart disease, diabetes, and a lot of these other illnesses are also things that people can think about and control. And, um, I just take a minute, well, we're talking about trying to protect us from COVID. That, you know, if we paid the same attention, um, to alcoholism, drug abuse, diabetes, which typically comes often comes with obesity and things, we could do things to trim the death toll in this country in a lot of areas. Um, for, for some reason, they've decided to highlight COVID as one right now. But, you know, death by motor vehicle is one of the biggest killers in this country, but we're certainly not gonna take cars away. There is an inherent amount of risk every day for people. And, um, I just think it's important to note that the death toll this year for the country hasn't changed from last year. Dylan, you, look, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that it's said that, you know, for much of the year, we've had dramatically fewer cars over COVID. Um, so since normal life has been disrupted in so many ways, I think that there's a lot of factors that would go into that. And I think without so many millions of cars making daily trips, uh, day in, day out, month after month after month, uh, could have a significant, uh, impact offsetting some of those numbers. So I'd be weary about looking too much into any of the specific numbers, uh, without having a more, uh, comprehensive, uh, view, which I don't have in front of me, but I just wanted to put that out there. I, 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 I don't know if you spent any time, uh, earlier this year driving around Boston, Mayorka, or even Worcester. Uh, they were just ghost towns for so many months. So.
Right.
Traffic fatalities are a serious, uh, a, a serious cause of injury and death. Uh, also, um, with ICU capacity, uh, with ICU capacity overloaded in so many places. Uh, if there are no ICU beds, if there are no beds available for people, that means that if you fall down the stairs, you get in a traffic accident, you have a heart attack, and there are no beds for you, uh, you could quickly find yourself in a, in a whole world apart, uh, pretty quickly. So I, I just wanted to make sure that people know, uh, you might look at COVID a certain way, but it's certainly not isolated, and it, it spills over into all other aspects of, uh, all other aspects of your life and, and health.
Thank you. Matt, any closing comment on that? We all set?
Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Jessica, any last comments? You're free to throw an opinion in there. All right. Let's move on. Approval meeting minutes for December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Um, I did get a chance to read these online, and I was all right with this, um, excuse me, with this, um, release of these minutes. I don't know if you guys have got a chance to read them?
I have, and I have no issue with it.
Okay. Take a motion then?
If you're okay with it, I'll make a motion.
Please.
Make a motion to accept the December twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting minutes.
Second motion, please.
Motion to second to, uh, accept the twenty, twen, December twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting minutes? Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Go, Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Those meetings minutes are done. Uh, correspondences, I see none this week. Select Board reports, you guys have anything you want to bring up?
We've talked about a lot of things I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Matt, anything for you?
No, but, um, I'm just putting it out there, Jessica, for any reason, some of these things, like setting up the, uh, vaccination station, anything like that. If you have any questions, just because of where I'm involved with the city of Worcester, I can also help get you in contact with some of the people over there. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out, and I'll see what I can do to help you.
I really appreciate that.
Okay. I was gonna say, it's not to say you need any help, but I just want you to know the offer's there.
No, thank you. Always good to have connections.
Okay. Town Administrator Report. Jessica, your turn.
Yes. So.
Then we'll get to our.
Um, I just wanted to say that December was a bit of a slower month, um, just because we did have the two holidays mixed in there. Um, and so a lot of people, like a lot of vendors, a lot of people that I work with on a regular basis, uh, took some time off. So it was a pretty, pretty quiet month. However, uh, we did start the budget. Um, all of the departments have their budgets to work on now, and they're due next Thursday, um, to me. And then I'll have, um, the first budget, um, will be ready for the Finance Committee's, uh, review and the Select Board's review, um, January twenty-first. Um, and then, you know, another thing that we're working on this week is Power and Sullivan. Our auditors are, um, doing their FY twenty audit, um, for the town. So that'll put us in a good position to try and get our bond rating back, um, because they are getting to it very early this year. Typically, it's not done for another couple of months, but, um, we, we got them early on the schedule this year. So that's what we're, we're doing this week. Um, they're doing it all remotely, so, um, you know, they have everything that they need. And they are in contact with me and Gene and the treasurer with anything else that they might need. Um, and other than that, I think the biggest, you know, the biggest thing that we worked on in the past couple of weeks has been that meeting that we had to start having conversations about a vaccine distribution site. That was really the biggest thing that we worked on the past couple of weeks. And that was, um, the police chief, the fire chief, Board of Health, um, the regional school district representatives. There was a, a lot of people involved in that meeting.
I believe they were doing the, uh, first responders in Rutland coming out.
Yes. Yeah. So first responders, and that, that's another.
That would be a good avenue, though, for you to see.
How they did it.
How they did it, and if that group has a regional plan.
Right, right.
Because that's another group we're regional with is, is our dispatch, so.
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, first responders are getting their vaccines in Rutland next week. For the first dose of their vaccine, I should say, because it's two doses.
For those that want it.
Yes. For those who want it. And that's it.
Okay. You guys have any questions for Jessica before we move into executive session? All right. When I make a motion, we move into executive session according to Mass General law, chapter thirty, section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy, strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the police union. And, um, we will come out of executive session only to, um, adjourn. Motion to second to go to executive session, come out to adjourn. Any further discussion? Like a roll call vote? All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Go, Clark.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. We'll just wait till we're.